And let me go get my agenda here, sorry. Roll call?
Mayor Breeden.
Aye, here.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Hayman?
Aye.
Mr. Mauer?
Here.
Mr. Martin is absent at this time. We have four present. We do have a quorum.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Please vote.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Okay, public comment on closed session. I don't see any public, so we will just go into closed session. Thank you. Okay, everybody here. Okay, I'm going to call the regular session back into order. And... Okay, I'm on. Okay. Calling regular session back into order. And I'd like to lead us in the pledge. If you will all stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like you to remain standing. And let's all just pray silently for resolution, peace, and gratefulness for what's going to happen this weekend, the parade of a thousand flags. So if you will do that, please. Thank you all. Please be seated. Okay, the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council met in closed session on one item shown on the agenda. There was discussion with staff, and the closed session was adjourned and will reconvene after the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, presentations. Would you all give those... Well, I'll join you at the podium.
Aaron Tucker, would you please come forward? Aaron, it's my pleasure to present you with this recognition of service, a certificate awarded to you in recognition of 10 years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. And we're really pleased that you're still with us.
Thank you for your great 10 years.
Shauna Villa Rodriguez? She's not here? Okay. Well, we'll still honor her tonight. I'm proud to honor Shauna in the recognition of service. This certificate is awarded in recognition of five years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. And hopefully, maybe we can present her again another time. But thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
This is your third one, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. This award is to Officer Mike Ogas. This is his third life-saving award. On August 7th of this year, officers responded to East Church Avenue where they found a subject unresponsive in a driveway. And when they found him, he had several lacerations to one of his arms. And one of the lacerations was extremely large. It was apparent to Officer Ogas that one of the arteries in the arm had been severely lacerated. So due to his quick thinking and action, he applied a tourniquet. After the tourniquet was applied, he... The subject regained consciousness. And due to his quick thinking, Officer Ogas saved the subject's life. And I think afterwards, the other officers tracked the blood trail for over, was it half a mile? A half a mile where they found that the subject had punched a window and cut his arm. So for over a half a mile, he had bled down the sidewalk in the street. So due to Officer Ogas' action that night, he was able to save the subject's life. So thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Persons wishing to comment on items not on the agenda may do so at this time if they do not already appear on the agenda. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council will not take action on an item that does not appear. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Stan Rotaro, and I am representing myself. At last week's infrastructure meeting, that would be August the 22nd, the city manager announced that the tentative agreement between the Navy and the city was on its way to the Secretary of the Navy. Now, this is the third time the city manager has announced in public that that local agreement was complete and being forwarded to DC. There's a lot of us hoping that it actually makes it there this time. In case it does get to DC, the timing that we were given with regard to the agreement was that the Navy is going to take two to three months to agree or disagree with the local agreement. And then it will take an additional five or six months for the local Navy to get a land appraisal. So we're still looking at seven to nine months before we get any real feedback from the Navy. I think as most of you understand, we started negotiations on this agreement back in 2012. So it's been seven long years. Now, there's going to be nothing done here locally regarding that agreement from this point on. The Navy's either going to accept it, or they're not. So therefore, since this is the end of it from the standpoint of the city, I'm requesting one more time... Now, I'm not sure if that makes five or six, but I'm requesting one more time that that document be released to the public so that the public can see what's going on for the last seven years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment?
Madam Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council, Stephen Morgan, 729 North Inyo Street, representing the Ridgecrest Lions Club this evening. Just an update for you. We have done nothing on Penny Pool. We've been a little busy the last two months with the earthquake. We still have $77,000, and we still are in communication with the staff, who is not here tonight. But we are still in discussions with them. So that is a synopsis on that. And just to let you know, as a part of the relief efforts in this community, and only a part, the Ridgecrest Lions Club has collected approximately $60,000 to help those in the community for the earthquake.
Can you say that number again?
Sixty thousand.
Six-oh, okay.
Over half of that has come from California State Lions and from Lions Clubs in California and outside of the state of California. $11,000 came from a benefit concert put on by the public. $4,000 came from GoFundMe. And then the Mustang Club just held a small fundraiser for $1,700, which we are extremely thankful for, all of the support and all of the donations. The issues that we've been running into are the permitting process through Riverside for the individuals that need the repairs, and of course, the costs. It's been running $2,000 to $6,000 per mobile home to get them back up on their standards, on their foundations. But we've been... We believe we've helped approximately 34 families, about 100 residents, with anything from groceries all the way up to getting their mobiles back on foundations and getting them back into a livable residence. We are just a small part of what has been going on in this community, but some questions had arisen as to what the Lions Club had been doing. We wanted to make sure the public knew. We wanted to give you an update as well. And as always, if there are individuals who wish to see the books, come see us. We will redact all of the names, of course, of all the individuals we have helped, but we can show you how we've spent the money. And that way, individuals who may question what we've been doing will get their questions answered. Do you have any questions of me?
Don't have any questions, but I want to congratulate you on the hard work. And, you know, when it comes to helping people, this is one of the most direct-to-the-person's needs type of help that you can come across, other than walking up and handing them money. And I commend you guys greatly for it, so...
I will take that back to the club. We're very thankful.
It's a good thing. Thank you.
I think the Lions Club has proven over the years they're a valuable asset to this community, and please tell them thank you for me, too.
I certainly will, as are all the other organizations. I don't want them to think that we are merely tooting our horn. We never do that. But there were some questions in the public, and I did not know if that had filtered out the council, so I wanted to make sure we gave a brief report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next item, anybody? Public? Okay, I see... Oh, all right.
Good evening, Council Mike Neal. Before I proceed, I need to ask one question of the city manager. Mr. City Manager, do we have a four-way stop at the intersection of Bowman and Downstreet put up yet? I want to make sure I'm not talking about something I don't need to be talking about.
I'll just remind the speaker that public comment is a time for the public to speak, and there's no obligation for the dais to talk.
Obviously, he doesn't want to answer that question. Well, I'll answer it for you. It's not there yet, unless it just got put up today. Let me read you some informational bits of information here. Let's see. Go back August 11. No, let's go back to April 2016. April 16, 2017. That intersection, a collision, several injured. The impact was as such that it flipped a vehicle over. August 11, 2017, another collision, another person injured. Normally, you know, the reports just say somebody's injured. Maybe that says it's taken off to the hospital. Just let me remind you, most of these collisions are probably at around 50 miles an hour, somebody slamming into a vehicle. So you're not getting off easy in a collision like that unless your airbags work super good, and you're already in good shape. And then we got December 7, 2018, another collision. And then we got August 23rd... I'm sorry, January 3rd, 2019, another person in a collision, injured, taken to the hospital. And then, of course, just recently, August 23rd, three vehicles involved in a collision at that intersection. So you can go back a good two years, and we've been having people getting slammed into at that intersection. And I don't know how long ago it was, but it was quite some time back. We were told we were going to get the four-way stop at that intersection. And here we are, one more collision, three vehicles involved, somebody injured bad enough, hauled off for medical attention, and still no four-way stop. A proven health and safety hazard in Ridgecrest. If citizens create health and safety hazards in this town, they get in big trouble. I'll remind you of Mr. Howard. That was what he was taken to civil court over and eventually lost his home of 45 years at a cost of almost three-quarters of a million dollars, by the way, to the taxpayers of Ridgecrest. And yet, we can't get two more stop signs planted in the intersection of Downs and Bowman Road. This really set me off last week when I saw in the paper, one more collision, three vehicles involved, all this time we've gone. I don't know that we actually don't have as many collisions there as we do on China Lake Boulevard. It'd be interesting to have the police department report to this council. I hope one of you will ask how many injury collisions we've had on China Lake Boulevard versus Downstreet and Bowman intersection over that same period of time, and how they compare. The traffic's not supposed to be anywhere near as much on Downstreet as it is on China Lake Boulevard, but that's five collisions. Five collisions, people injured, their lives possibly changed from the damage for a long time, in some cases, maybe from now on, because we can't get around to planting a couple stop signs at that intersection. I have to say, my feeling on this is bordering, beginning to border on disgust. And I hate to say that, but when I see... You know, I didn't know it was this bad until I started going back. Thanks to the DI, by the way, they report all these. I hope you'll keep it up, Jessica, and your staff down there, and get it in the paper in front of people's eyes every time there's a collision there, because the city needs to get it done.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
Just a minute. I mean, can we not address... Are we doing that? Or what are we doing? Can we... Before we just zing on to something else, can we address with this gentleman, he's talking about a public safety issue? What is the reason we can't get this done?
We've put for an update at the infrastructure committee meeting for September to update the board on that.
But we approved this project a long time ago, and I don't understand why we can't go ahead and get the stop. I know we have all these big grandiose plans of elevations and grading and all that, but why can't we put the stop signs up now? We've done the traffic study, the MUTCD warrants, all of that stuff. We should be able to put the stop signs up.
We'll get you that answer during the infrastructure committee meeting. I don't believe that that intersection is dangerous per se. We have anywhere between, you know, 40 and 60 injury collisions a year. And to have, you know, reportedly, Mr. Neal's saying, five over a three-year period of time, does not create a dangerous situation. Now, I do agree that we do need to move forward and get that there, but I won't guarantee that we won't still have collisions at that intersection even if it's controlled, because we do have several collisions at intersections that do have stop signs and stoplights already. So I'll have staff report back to the infrastructure committee and know where we're at. I know we're going to try moving that project as forward as quickly as possible, but you have to understand if we don't place those stop signs in such a way and in such a manner, we could be creating more liability for the city than not.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Thank you. Are you using your five minutes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Nigel White Casino and manager of the proposed Ridgecrest Casino Hotel and Entertainment Complex from Las Vegas. What I've done here is just prepared a sort of one-page white paper of where I believe everything is as of today, certainly from a legal perspective, as affects the citizens and the city of Ridgecrest, as well as city council. So I'm just... I've handed this out to everybody so they have a copy of it. I'm just going to go through the headings and just highlight some of the key pieces in here, and I hopefully will not take up the whole of my five minutes. So salient questions and facts. Does the city want to waste money on legal fees? And of course, this is all to do with the property that the tribe and as the developers have been trying to purchase that appears to be held up by city council. We have approved an approved MSA agreement, municipal services agreement, and we also believe the silent and quiet majority supports this project and its economic benefits. I have consistently, over the years, said the same thing, pointed stuff in the same direction, haven't wavered, haven't changed my mind, haven't done 360s, have been very, very consistent in everything that I've said. And of course, you've heard me say numerous times that we will do everything in our power to protect our economic municipal services agreement. The city's faced with two sets of litigation. Number one is China Lake Properties, which is litigation on the land side, and the other litigation is actually arbitration on the MSA side. So to touch base first of all on the China Lake litigation, the city chose, I guess, to ignore the first letter that was sent out by the owner. A lawsuit will be filed on the week of September the 9th, that's next week. That performance demand letter was ignored by the city. City's going to incur attorney bills. The China Lake contract language for that property and that area down by the base is very clear. The results are going to mean a breach of contract by the city. The city's going to be forced to perform. The city's going to be hit with plaintiff's legal fees and also going to be hit by damages for China Lake. So just that's to let everybody know what's coming on barreling on down the line from China Lake. From the arbitration side on the MSA side, the city ignored the meet-and-confer request by the tribe, which we believe was a mischievous mistake. City has retained expensive San Francisco attorneys. We believe the MSA has been breached and there's strong evidence. The Mammoth lawyers, who won a $30 million suit against the city of Mammoth, have closely studied our large document file in our case in Ridgecrest, and we believe we have a strong case. So I believe, and we believe, the city's at risk and has costs hanging out there for one, defending the arbitration, two, liability for our attorney fees, and some significant dollars for damages. So in summary, what's the overall questions? You know, my question to city council is, why file an approved contract with a very strong inherent risk of losing not one case, but both cases? Do the citizens of Ridgecrest want an expensive legal fight when they have great economic benefits hanging out there? And I went through those economic benefits two, three weeks ago, you know, basically a $30 million payments to the city over the course of 20 years, you know? And why... So why risk losing $30 million in revenues for the city, plus, of course, losing the loss of the $5.5 million that we're going to pay for the land? And also, a big, big factor in this project is the economic multiplier effect, which means small businesses in this town and jobs will multiply economically through the city of Ridgecrest. The city gets proven economic benefits as shown in the third-party economic study, which was prepared by the innovations study group. The MSA is economically favorable when compared to the equivalent agreement with Hard Rock and Kern County. Finally, we believe the majority of citizens, businesses, and civic organizations actually support this project. I'd like to respectfully suggest that the city council stop listening to a vocal minority and do what's right for the city and its coffers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening, Council. Scott Miller, citizen of Ridgecrest on East Wilson. Though I didn't write this stuff down tonight, and I apologize in advance, I just want to go over a couple of things, going back to the casino and entertainment complex. It was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago by actually, not the tribe, but a citizen, that when the sale goes through, the schools see something about 40% of the revenue of that. I may be wrong in that percentage, but it's a large percentage that goes back to the schools. As you all know, the Richmond School just moved off base, and they're in temporary facilities over there. So having 40% of that revenue would be a huge economic boom. And as Mr. White just explained a moment ago, the businesses that make... That may come into town, Councilperson Stevens mentioned a couple of weeks ago that she was in Las Vegas and that she was talking to the businesses coming into town. When there's more people, more businesses will come. How's that saying go? Build it, and they will come? I'm the first to say, there are people that are absolutely opposed to a casino, and I respect that. However, your disagreement with having said casino in Ridgecrest shouldn't necessarily affect the livelihood and the lives of others. People have mentioned recently that, well, I don't want to go into a casino as I may gamble. You know? You can self-exclude out of a casino. You can go up and... Or have a loved one go up and say, "I don't want this person in the casino." They can self-exclude. So you won't be allowed in the casino. Security will have you... Will take you on out nicely, as you came in nicely and said, "Hey, I don't want to be here." Well, say you give into that temptation and go in, okay? They'll ask you to leave. But there's also going to be restaurants. There's going to be entertainment. I recently was in Bishop, and they have a great entertainment complex up there. Ours is going to be a little bigger, and we're going to have more opportunity for the citizens of Ridgecrest to have a good time. And again, build it, and they will come. It's not going to be a grandiose Las Vegas gigantic casino thing. It's going to show the spirit of Ridgecrest. There's some business owners on council, and there's some not-business owners on council. We all understand business. It's a business decision. It's not a personal decision. And with that, I'll be done. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Okay, thank you all. The next item on the agenda is council announcements. Does any council... Go ahead, Mike.
I think at the last meeting, I announced that my planning commissioner was...
I think at the last meeting I announced that my planning commissioner was in Loma Linda Hospital waiting for a heart. And I asked for everybody's prayers and concerns for him. I'm happy to announce that today he got a new heart, and he's doing well, recovering. And I thank all those that have had him in your prayers. And hopefully, in the next few weeks, he'll be back in Ridgecrest.
Good news. Scott?
Uh, no.
We have a movie night coming up on Saturday, September fourteenth at seven thirty. The movie will be Incredibles Two, so everyone come out and enjoy a free, fun, family movie night.
I just want to remind everybody about the parade of a thousand flags this weekend. The city of Ridgecrest is participating with two rows, as well as probably, Pat, if I speak too strongly, ninety-nine, nine-tenths percent of the people in the community will be in the parade. So, it'll be nice to wave at each other. But I appreciate the efforts and everything that you all do. So, invite everyone who isn't in the parade to come watch it. Any others? Okay, we will then go to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or questions is desired by anyone, that item may be removed. From the consent calendar will be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Do any members of the council wish to have any of these items approved? And I will read them. Proposed action to approve draft minutes for the City of Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency and Financing Authority Housing Authority Regular Meeting Date at August twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and approval resolution for grant acceptance for a grant awarded from the State of California of Office of Traffic Safety. Anybody wish to have those, any of these items pulled on the council? Is there anybody in the public who would like to have, which one, sir?
Number four.
Number four?
Okay, all right. So, motion to approve item number three?
So, move.
Give him just one second to get the correct screen up there for number three. Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, item number four. Sir, Jed, you're going to address that, okay? And Mike, would you want to ask what the questions are, or you just want the whole thing explained?
I would recommend that if Mr. Neal has a comment, that since council didn't wish it polled, that I would recommend you get up and ask your comment.
Okay. Haven't seen these, I don't think, for a while, but they've been around. So, we're trying to get the grant money. And so, what we got on the list here, as far as the DUI aspect is, seven DUI saturation patrol operations, which I'm glad to see on the list. Those prove to be effective when you think about how you're going to catch DUI drivers. That's the way to do it. Unfortunately, we still have four DUI driver's license checkpoints. And of course, they always say, throw it in there, DUI slash driver's license checkpoint. So, I think there's some reasoning behind that. We used to do these on a regular basis. At first, it was all DUI checkpoints. And I went out and observed a number of them. That's where I got to know Michael Myers very well. And to the town's benefit, he was an honest and forthright traffic officer. He was truthful, and we had several conversations. And I think during the course of those is where we actually leaned toward and began the route down, going toward pushing Office of Traffic Safety to fund the saturation patrols, because originally it was all checkpoints. Unfortunately, DUI checkpoints are not effective really at all to much of a degree. And this was per Sergeant Myers, several years back. He could see for himself, and I could see for myself. All they were doing was delaying drivers on the road. They didn't catch the occasional, you know, your headlights out and your taillights out. And, you know, they might find, spot some guy that they've been looking for, whatever, you know. Unfortunately, it's, even though the courts lay out all these rules and say, "Oh, here's how you have to do them, and here's all the things you have to do if you're going to be political, constitutional, you're a basic fundamental violation of your right to travel. You're being stopped for no reasonable, articulable suspicion or probable cause. You're just being stopped because you're on the road and you're driving." So, the main benefit out of a DUI checkpoint, I just make this observation, is more overtime pay for the police officers and not much more safety for the public.
A what, sir? It's more a what?
It's more overtime pay for the police officers who get to attend them all night long. But I think they normally go on for, what, like, seven hours, something like that, around that timeframe? So, you know, obviously, we're going to do them. You're not going to stop doing them just because I get up here and said this. But I think the public should be aware of these simple facts and know, you know, all this is a grant. It's not free money. Think for this a little bit, and you can figure out real quick. Grant money's not free money. It's your tax dollars. It goes to the feds, it comes to the state, it comes down to Ridgecrest, and that's what's paying for it. Money right out of your pocket. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jed, would you like to say anything? Counsel, will you have anything that you would like to say? I would like to say that it's an eighty thousand dollar grant that benefits this community by keeping drivers impaired off the street. If nothing, it's simply, in my mind, when you see them and you know they're going to be there, or you, somebody tells you they're going to be there, you're not going to be driving down there, and you don't know when they're going to move. So, I think it's a way to make it not so easy. Jed, do you have anything you want to say?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Is there any other council discussion? Okay?
I move approval. Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is discussion and action items. A resolution approving the project list. I'm sorry. Fiscal year 2019-20 for the California State of Good Repair SGR program for the following project, Corp Yard Solar Power System. Sir?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is a Road Repair and Accountability Act of two thousand and seventeen. Most people call it the SB one. It was a gas tax. There's money set aside for investment in public transit, and it's called the State of Good Repair Program. This year, that we've been granted by Kern Cod, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars is our portion of this money to be used for this. We, the transit coordinator and I sat down and discussed extensively what could be done with the project money. And we came up that we've been moving towards a solar-based system. One of the, what we'd like to do is have all-electric buses and vans, and then have a solar generating station on top of the sun shield that was built. And that's one of the reasons it was built for. It was designed to have those on top of it. So, we're like, we're moving forward with this. We would like to use this money towards that end. And that's what we're asking for council to approve, that our use of the money.
Okay, is there any questions? Comments?
So, roughly, how long are we looking at before you think it'll become operational to?
Well, I would say, this fiscal year, we'll get our first electrical van, our first electric van. It, if item number, hang on a minute, nine. If we get, you know, council approves that CMAC going through, and it's approved at the county level, that would actually fund the entire charging stations, solar array, the entire bit. This money would be used as part of the matching funds.
To the fueling, or, you know, the recharge station would be ready to go.
Right. So, I would say, in the next two years, if the CMAC project goes through, you should see us have the charging ability. In the next two years, we'll have the one van, and the next two buses will be available. And then the ones after that will be a couple more years down the road.
Good, thanks.
Any other questions? Questions from the public, comments?
Good evening, board. One preliminary question. I don't remember the numbers. I believe we have somewhere between five to seven vans slash buses we're using right now in the transit system. What's the basic purchase price that we have expended on those vehicles? Do you know?
I believe they're in the high hundreds to low two hundred thousands for the short, for the cutaway buses, is what they're called. The van should be in the middle hundreds to low hundreds. We could not get, for the grant that we have to purchase, we, all right.
I'm talking about the ones we have now?
Well, hang on. We got a grant to purchase a new one like what we have now.
Right.
And it was for two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
So, that's why I said low, low hundreds to middle twos. I mean, high hundreds to middle twos for a regular cutaway twenty-six-passenger bus. The van, like I said, I believe is in the low hundreds to middle hundreds.
Right.
We haven't got an actual bid on one yet, but Chris has been researching it. Okay, I'm sorry. Ask your question one more time, so I make sure I'm answering.
Well, I think you just did. I can add. So, at the top of my brain cells, I'm coming up with over a million dollars' worth of buses slash vans we have in our transit fleet.
Right. Now, they're replaced every ten years generally under one grant program or another.
Right.
So, we will be waiting as they come due. I know, like I said, I know there's two more due in 2022. And I believe that there's several more two years after that. But I can't tell you an exact number. I didn't come prepared for that question.
So, that's what was not, so we're going to wait until the end of the normal replacement cycle? We're not going to let go ahead, so we got some money now, we're going to get rid of the vans we got and get electric ones? Or is, what's the case?
The answer to that is that's how we're going to start, for sure. All right. As the next CMAC process comes through, which will be two years from now, my guess is with council and the Infrastructure Committee's approval, we may ask for several buses to replace earlier.
Okay.
But by going with this electrical vans, we cut out the cost of gasoline, which would make our fare box much more, much closer to being made?
Possibly.
No.
The hardest thing we've ever had to meet with this system is, in fact, we faked it last year and dumped money out of some fund into it to make out like we got, we met fare box, when we really didn't. But, yeah, I mean, it's always that motivation. So, based on what Mr. Lowery just said, I would hardly recommend to those that are through on the Infrastructure Committee, I guess I'll probably have to repeat this over time if I'm still coming up here making comment, that we do wait until the current vans meet their normalized cycle before purchasing the electric vehicles. If you research the supposed advantage of electric vehicles, you know, for the reason everybody, you know, people push this as well, you know, and it cuts the O2 emissions and so forth and so on. Well, it takes, it creates as much of a problem making the batteries for these vehicles as you ever get out of gas-powered vehicles. That's been put out there for quite some time. So, we're not really doing anything for the environment, going to electric vehicles. So, a push to go down that road is not meeting any real objective along those lines. You know, the one about, you know, reducing gas costs and meeting fare box and all this. It'd be, I see some numbers projected as to how much closer we are to meeting fare box, just for curiosity. I mean, I personally don't really care, because the transit system's pretty much been a waste of money, taxpayers' money ever from day one. You know, the buses rarely have very many people on them. It's just meeting a political agenda that's pushed on the cities from the state of California. But, you know, if that's, we're going to throw that out there, it'd be nice to see the numbers that show us, well, we might meet fare box, so get tiny little bit closer to meeting fare box by doing this. Although, I suspect we'll probably still be really far away from it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do I need to do the name thing, or can I just ask a question?
Sure, can you identify yourself, please?
Sure. My name is Megan Richter, R-I-C-H-T-E-R. First, short comment. Just because people are not necessarily consumers of something like a bus doesn't mean it's not still valuable to a community. Second thing, or questions, is Vegas has been trying to implement some EV systems as well, and they've had an issue with range. So, I was wondering, have you guys checked out with range for their vehicles? And so, obviously, that's Vegas, which is a lot bigger than us. But have you guys looked at the specs on terms of range and chargeability and how long that takes for these vehicles?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
And that's why, when we get to number nine, okay, today, no, no.
Okay.
I don't mind explaining some of this now. We're looking for two fast-charging systems and five or six, five, of the regular charging systems. So, what'll happen is that the way our buses work, they're spaced out on use when they break for lunch, that type of thing. So, we'll be able to, there's only maybe two routes that would require additional charging during the day. Most of the rest of them should meet with no trouble at all, even at current standards. And one of the things that Mr. Neal said was, is that they're getting better all the time. So, there's only two routes right now that currently would need recharging in the middle. So, yes, we have, and, yeah.
Now, would you guys have, how would you deal with maintenance for these? Have you, will somebody be here all the time, or will we always have to, like, contract out to get repairs done when they're needed?
One of the things that we'll do is, we're going to start with one, and then we'll probably get two more, whether they'll be exactly the same or not, I can't say. But we currently have a mechanic that's more often than not completely assigned to transit. So, and that's our one mechanic. So, we're going to send that person to training so that they can handle general maintenance themselves.
And then how long would you do the field study with that one vehicle to see how well it works?
We have two years or two and a half years before the next ones come up. So, I think that would give us plenty of time to see if they actually perform as advertised.
So, are you just going to, is your metric just going to be that they're performing as advertised? Or what would you like to see in terms of cost reduction between your old vans?
Well, we'd like to see the cost of, overall, the cost of gasoline go away.
Okay.
Once we have the solar right on top, it will take care of, again, now we're talking about number nine. So, I don't want to go, is it all right if I continue, because it helps explain the question?
Are you going to be here for the whole meeting?
Yeah, I'll be creeping in the back.
Yeah, then let's do that at the time.
Maybe you've asked the question again at number nine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, council. Scott Miller. Maybe we should move number nine to the next one, so there's nothing in between, so that everybody's on the same page. That may prove to be more beneficial instead of having something in between. Just a thought.
I can explain why it's number nine. We didn't get the actual, the submittal done until after this, the stuff had to be turned into RICA.
I see.
So, it had to be last, because that's, but that's why it was in that order anyway.
It's all your fault, I'll break up. I'm kidding.
No, it's our fault for not having the stuff done earlier.
Just in my head and his disease, just to move it in there. I think you said these, the buses are going out, I'm sorry, the buses are going out for bid. Is that my understanding?
One van will go out to bid sometime this fiscal year.
When that bidding process is started, will the local business, will the local? When that bidding process is started, will the local business, will the local dealerships have an opportunity to bid on that? Will they be notified of a bid for that? Or is that even an option? Part two to that question before you answer that one, and if it's not our local, will it be in Kern County? So those, let me see, $1.2 million, I think, or something like that?
No, I didn't. I said it was somewhere between the low 100,000s and the middle 100,000s.
For the entire project.
That's okay. Oh, well, no, that, that all depends on what we end up moving towards because we'll probably have to have more than just vans.
Okay.
And some of those will be more expensive. But where I was going is, is that some of these are specialized because they require, that we all have to have wheelchair lifts, et cetera, which is our requirement for all of our transit vehicles. So it will go out to bid to people that actually build them. And there, there is more than one or two groups.
So they would, they'd be, I'm sorry, they'd be custom, custom builds and not available, so not off the shelf?
That's correct.
Okay. And those companies, I'm assuming, are not in Kern County or they are in Kern County?
You know, that, that's more Chris's area and I'm sorry, he went home sick tonight. So he's done the research, so I can tell you about what things cost because we've talked.
Understood.
But I can't, I can't tell you where they are for sure.
And the only reason I ask that is with the $100,000 in the tax revenue for that sale of $100,000, it'd be nice to just keep it, keep it as local as we can, whether it would be in Ridgecrest or Kern County. And we may want to call Ripley's, I kind of agreed with what Mr. Neal said a moment ago, is having a graph of where the, the cost comparisons come together on the, whether, I know you said you want to get rid of gas, I agree. But it'd be interesting to see in a graph of where the cost comparisons come together on where it becomes profitable.
The last part one more time, please. What's the graph, are costs come together and I missed?
And where it becomes profitable or not expensive as running a fuel vehicle.
Again, I understand that, that Mr. Neal's opinion that it's all taxpayers' dollars, I do. But when it's a grant that comes out of money that's already there from the federal government that would cover the entire cost minus our match of the, how do I put, of, of the solar array and the charging stations, if I remember correctly, and I may not, there's about $60,000 every year in gasoline that's spent. So our match is about $70,000 for the project. So we're talking an overall return on our investment in a year plus.
That, okay. So about a year plus to, okay. That, I'm good. Thank you.
Let me just add one thing, Scott, here, that you referred to that grant money is going to be paid to somebody and we're already paying our share. I would like to see some of that returned locally.
Right. That's.
Thank you.
That's where I'm going to also. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Is there any other public comments or questions?
We also need to realize that the state of California's goal is to do away with gasoline vehicles by 2030.
Exactly.
Which is only a little over 10 years.
Kern Cogus has addressed that and I know that, yeah. Okay. Anybody else has any comments? Okay. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Please vote. Mr. Martin? Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item. A resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council confirming the continuance of a local emergency.
Sorry, got to sign this thing going. Yes, this is our, the ordinance that we need to continue to, for the emergency order as we continue to have the aftershocks and continue the recovery process. Hopefully, as we continue the recovery efforts and get the residences in place, as we've identified the people that are still without homes and the aftershocks continues to subside, that we'll be able to hopefully not continue this too much longer. But as those continue, I recommend that we continue the resolution as written until the recovery processes and the streets or, or the sewer system. We still have the, to wait and see what the scope shows on the damage to that as well, which hopefully we should know here in the, in the coming weeks. So once that is assessed, then hopefully in the, either next month or the month after, hopefully we can look to hopefully end this. But as for now, I, I recommend that, and I hope that council will continue the resolution to extend this. Without taking any questions.
Questions, anybody? Questions from the public? Okay, motion?
We have to do this every 30 days, right?
Right.
Correct, sir.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay. Item number seven, resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council approving renewal of the license agreement between the city of Ridgecrest and Southern California Edison for the existing distribution power pole easement along the west side of South Downs Avenue and authorize the city manager Ron Strand to sign the renewal license agreement. Mr. Coates?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, City Council, this is simply an extension for a, an existing license agreement with Southern California Edison, which allows us to operate, maintain, and construct improvements along the frontage of their substation along South Downs. We had a prior, well, actually, it's an existing license agreement which is going to expire this month and Southern California Edison advised us that we need to extend that. This extension will give us an additional five years of extension or time in which we can occupy, maintain, and construct improvements along the frontage of their substation. This will be a necessary requirement for, to allow us to continue with our South Downs West Side Ridgecrest or Down Street Improvement Project, which is an RSTP-funded project. The city attorneys looked at this and as he's indicated, it's what he expected for an agreement. He looked at the prior agreement, this agreement, and indicated, in his own words, there's no deal busters. So this is a procedural, this is a procedural request. There's no fee associated with it. Initially, the first one, I think, cost us a little over a grand. This one is gratis. So it's a procedural item, just to continue our license agreement with Southern California Edison. With that, I'm asking that you authorize the city manager to initial and sign the time extension or the new license agreement, extending the time for an additional five years.
Any questions from council? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, motion?
Motion to move. Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item. Mr. Mauer, I believe this is yours.
That's correct. My appointee to the Measure V Committee resigned abruptly and we had no current applications. I had to get on my knees and grovel to get someone to apply. And so Steve Morgan has agreed to serve on the Measure V Committee. So he's, I nominate and appoint him as my appointee to the Measure V Committee.
And this doesn't require council approval. It's just a notification of who you are appointing for public information, correct? Okay.
I, I had a quick question. I, I thought that he served on it before, correctly?
He served on the, on the Measure L Committee and he had resigned at that time. But he agreed to serve now at my pleasure, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your agreement to serve. Okay, the next item, approve a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for congestion mitigation from C-MAC funding and committing the necessary local match and stating the assurance to complete the project.
Good evening again. What we're looking for here is an, an approval of our C-MAC application. Now, C-MAC is congestion mitigation and air quality. It's a federal grant program that basically looks for a couple of different things. It looks for reduction in our carbon footprint as well as the cost effectiveness of the, the item that we've chosen. This, this particular project went through the infrastructure committee and was approved by them before we submitted it all. So what we're looking for here is, this is the corp yard solar power electrical vehicle charging infrastructure. What it will do is it's two level, three DC fast chargers. And it says six here, but I believe it's five of, of the regular chargers that we're doing. The energy produced by this system will not only charge our vehicles, but it should provide the electricity needed to, for both the transit building and, and the maintenance building in the same location. The overall project, again, it says two different numbers here. What happened was, is our, our application was not finished by the time that this was, needed to be given to RICA. We got one fixed, but not the other. The actual number, 733-1650, is the cost of the project, which is, it does say that in the summary, but it does not say that in the financial impact. Both those numbers should match at the 733-16. It says match, that's the match, I'm sorry. It's a seven, let me check just to make sure. Yeah, the match is 733-1650. So that, that is the match that we're looking for. It says out of the general fund, the 42,000 approved earlier can be used as part of the match. So this will leave just over $30,000 that needs to come out of the general fund. To receive $700,000 at the cost of 30 seems to be a pretty profitable suggestion. Also, it would only be if this project makes it through the selection process that, that the city would be obligated for those funds.
Okay, is there any questions from council?
So we're using as much funding as we can from the transit fund because during infrastructure, we talked about transit paying for the match, not?
It, it's not in this year's budget. That doesn't mean that, my, my guarantee is that this will not be built before next year, but we must state a match in the application.
Okay. But we're going to?
We'll work as hard as we can to make sure it fits within the transit budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been told that if we get notified, it'll be in April of 2020 and the project won't be constructed until FY '21. So we'll have time to be able to make the appropriate budget acquisitions or budget appropriations at that time during the budget process.
But I, I wouldn't want to say that it's an absolute guarantee without, because I can't see into the future.
Any other questions? Would you like to come back up so we can address your questions? I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Richter.
Richter, I knew that, but I couldn't remember your first name. Ma'am, how's that? Thank you.
So would you ask me the question one more time, please?
Sure. So.
Yeah, talk into the mics.
Thank you. What kind of, you guys said you had looked at the, what is your metric for success in the first year? Because you're going to have one van as your pilot program, correct?
Yep.
So the metric is that it essentially meets or matches the 60 grand that you would have paid in gasoline?
No.
Okay.
No, no. First of all, 60 grand is for all the buses.
Okay.
So it, it would take its portion of it, all right. In addition, the van would actually have to physically work within our system. Some of the vans only have rear access for handicap where that's, won't work for us because all of our bus stops come off the curb. So we're going to need to find vans that, that open off to the side or figure a way around that. So it would have to actually physically work for what we need it to do as well as the range on all but two of the routes would have to make the whole day.
And then the, the physical range for that, what, do you have you guys specked out the actual physical range that you're looking at in regards to what it has to hit each day, how many miles is that?
We actually have taken the length of our routes and, and figured even with air conditioning running, because in Ridgecrest, that's a huge item, all right, that we should be able to make all but two of the routes. The one that goes to Inukent and the one that goes to Ransburg, we won't make without recharging.
How long is the fast recharge? Or have you specked that out?
Two hours.
Two hours. Are you guys, have you guys already considered that if you do add more in the future? Like, I know with Teslas, if you have one Tesla, that's fine, it'll charge quickly. But if there are a bunch of other ones in the same group, the, the charging slows down? Has that been something you've, you've considered with making a larger fleet?
All right. I'm not sure I understood your question. One more time, please.
So, so when you have a Tesla hanging out at a charging station and there's only one, it'll charge much more quickly than if there's him and another guy and another guy all charging at the same time?
Now I understand.
Yes.
This, this will be a larger, large enough solar array on top that it should be able to take care of charging the buses that aren't in use as well as any of them that need to be fast charged, as well as, it's going to have a battery system to store the electricity so that we can charge our regular buses overnight when the sun's not shining.
Okay. I think those are most of the questions so far. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bart, do you have an estimate of what the electricity costs at the corp yard now?
I honestly don't have that off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
But this will generate enough power to cover both those buildings?
It does. They, Chris said that.
Yeah, I believe the electric bill is $12,000 a year at the corp yard.
It's about $1,000 a month.
Right.
So it's, so it's going to save us $1,000 a month right off the bat.
And, and this is, we, because I know some people, when they've put solar in at their homes or businesses, they haven't designed it to be peak hour demand sufficient and then they still end up getting pinged with overage charges or, you know, peak hour demand charges. So we've made sure that we're divi, we've, we've designed a hefty enough system to make sure if we add on anything that we will be covered.
Since it will be charging the batteries as well as, you know, doing the buildings, the peak charges will be, the batteries will be charged during the day. Peak charges have moved till late afternoon to evening now, so that it affects more homeowners and businesses. So the battery should be charged before the, the vehicles ever come back in. And that's when our people will be in the buildings. So the need for the electricity in the buildings will go down considerably during the peak hours because we're done at five.
Okay.
So I, I think that we should be fine.
Okay.
Also, you've got to remember, we haven't even started the design process yet. This is an estimate. So when we get into the design process, things like that will be more fully calculated.
Got it.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Okay, motion?
Still moved. Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is committee report. City Org?
Did not meet.
Finance, Scott?
Yes, Finance did meet and we confirmed the company to do the city employee wage assessment. And so that is in progress. And that was the sole agenda item on our meeting. So that's it. And that was the sole agenda item on our meeting, so that's it.
Okay, Infrastructure?
We did meet, and we didn't really, well, we reviewed several items. For example, the Ward Street project. We discussed, again, Southern California Edison Option E, and that's gonna be presented to council, I think, next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that'll be on council agenda next meeting. We discussed a couple of C Mac applications. We got notified that SCE has requested another rate increase because of disaster recovery. And then we approved that when we go out to bid for the west side of Downs, that we will use some impact funds instead of Measure V funds for the, for the city's portion of that. We have approximately a million and a half in impact funds that are available for specific projects. It has to be something that improves, like widening the street, like Downstreet, so. We got, as Stan mentioned, we got an empty wastewater plant, and that was pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Parks and Rec and Quality of Life, we haven't met, have we, Lindsay?
No.
Did not meet.
Youth Advisory Council? Action?
We will be meeting September seventeenth at four PM. Are we meeting over in Kermit G? Oh, sorry, it was scheduled for the seventeenth, but it's at, it's the twenty-third. Yes, you're correct. At Kermit G.
Okay, RACVB? Okay. The Economic Development Committee?
We haven't met.
Alright, other committees, boards, or commissions?
Yeah, I have Kern Cog in two weeks from tomorrow, and the city is actually gonna make the presentation before Kern Cog. I believe that both Jed and Ron are gonna go over and make that presentation. They want us to make a presentation on our earthquake situation. So we're actually gonna be doing the presentation.
Good. Okay, City Managers Report? Was, I'm sorry, was there any others I missed, I didn't? Okay, City Managers Report?
The earthquake meeting.
Yeah, we're having the California Seismic. Maybe I have a chief come up and say it's not, come on up, Jed.
That's gonna be here, right? You're gonna talk about it, Jed?
On September eleventh, the Governor's Safety Seismic Commission will be meeting here. It's an all-day event. Several presentations from the city, as well as Kern County, USGS, CGS. There's a lot of presenters. The, we'll be putting out the agenda. We'll put it on our Facebook page, as well as the city website tomorrow, and it's on their website as well already. It's open to the public, it's open to everybody. We'll be streaming it as well, so I hope everybody attends.
Again, that's September eleventh, did you say?
Yes, next Wednesday.
Well, we got you there. So on, an update on the SBA loan, folks? Are they still actively at the Kermit G Center? And roughly how long, any update on the length of time they'll be here?
They haven't said how, when they're going to leave yet. I did get a report this morning. The latest report is they've issued over two million dollars in loans out to, they haven't broken it down, to whether it's city, county, where they've given the loans. At least they haven't broken it down to me, so, but it's over two million in loans so far, so.
So anybody needing their assistance should probably get to getting after it here pretty quick.
Yeah, they could still do it, even if they leave within the next week or so. They can still do it online into October.
Okay.
And all the loans they've approved, all but one have been for homes.
Correct.
They only approved one business so far, all the rest have been for homes.
Correct.
Yeah, so far they got fourteen businesses have applied for loans, and they have approved two.
Two now.
For the total of two ninety-four. Yeah, this is just as of today. They have, they received a hundred and eighteen loan applications for homes. They've approved fifty-one. Total of both areas so far is two point one million. So it's safe to say they will probably have pretty close to four to five million dollars in loans by the time they're done, close.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. City Managers Report?
Only that issue that Mr. Neal brought up about the intersection of Bowman and Downs will be brought to the Infrastructure Committee for staff to brief that committee of the status where those stop signs and the intersection improvements are at, and they'll be able to ask all the questions they have at that point in time.
How did, did you have anything to report on the slurry seal machine?
I do believe that we have another slurry program that's gonna start here fairly quick.
I believe it's starting a week from Monday.
I know that our crew has been working very diligently in prepping the roads that we're gonna slurry seal. And so I know that if you want, we can discuss that further at the Infrastructure, the next council. We can, we could discuss that in more detail. But I do know that they've been working very hard to get that next series going.
I know that they've prepped more than we promised to do, okay? So I don't know, I don't think we'll get done with everything they have prepped at this point in time.
But you'll try. Yeah, actually, the report that I got back from some of the street staff was that they see a benefit to this program. It actually gives them a little bit of satisfaction, actually seeing something repaired and improved, other than just fixing potholes and cracks. So the program, from the staff's perspective, is positive.
Good. Okay, nothing else, sir? Okay, future agenda items? Anybody?
Can we put on to discuss, or what do we need to do that we can get that wastewater agreement out in the public?
If City Council wishes for me to release the draft easement agreement, I will do so. It's just not normally a good thing when you're in the middle of negotiations to do that. So it's really up to council. If council says so, I will. But normally, when you're in the middle of negotiating with another entity, it's not good to fight on two fronts. Now, if the council wishes to have a copy, I'd be more than happy to give it to you guys.
Okay, is that all we have for future agenda items? Anybody? Okay.
I mentioned that we'd have the Edison Company contract up next meeting. It's already on the table.
Oh, yeah, well, and God, we trust is on the agenda for the next.
It is, sir, and I sent you an email today reminding you, but the staff reports are due Monday.
Right, okay, we'll do it. And that's gonna be a votable item, correct, an action item?
If you write it up.
Yes, I would like it, yeah, right, correct.
Depends on how you write it.
Okay, council and mayor comments, anybody?
I have some. So I just wanted to make some comments about, so today Newsom signed a bill allowing public to refuse assisting officers. A few weeks ago, he signed a use of force bill that also went against our officers. Compile that with forty-seven and fifty-seven, which have consequently encouraged an increase in criminals. Homelessness and crime is running rampant in our state. And it's just really sad to me that our state has continued to spit in the face of our officers. It's very disappointing, because, sorry, this is emotional for me. These people were elected and took an oath to serve and protect. And the only ones, it seems, that they are serving and protecting these days are the criminals. And I'm sorry that our officers have had their hands tied so severely, and it seems like it's not ceasing. I hope that our city won't do anything to increase crime or homelessness, because unfortunately, our officers' hands are tied when it comes to dealing with the criminals and the homeless people, so. And I just want you to know that I stand with you all, and I appreciate everything that you do, and I'm sorry for everything that you continually have to be put through by our state officials.
I'd just like to add to that, that I think that the law that Newsom just signed was originally put in place back in the eighteen hundreds. So it's been almost a hundred and fifty-year law that the Sacramento just repealed. That doesn't mean we can't help the officers if they need it.
Yeah, I think that was the question when I read some testimony, and it's not that people can refuse. It was, it was a choice people have, and that, not that they can't help, but it is a choice. And my concern that, when I first read that, was what does that mean? If indeed you choose to help, do you have liability if you're involved in the helping? And I don't want people to have to say, gee, am I gonna be sued if I help the police officer? And I guess that is the choice, and that's why I was hoping that, I'm glad you brought it up, Lindsay, because I was gonna ask the same question afterwards when I first read that. It didn't make any sense. If you are a Good Samaritan, you think of all the Good Samaritans we've heard about these past few weeks, and many that we had inside the city of Ridgecrest. The, do we, do they bear responsibility? And can you address that at all?
I'm gonna have to look that up for you, but I have heard there's a Good Samaritan law that protects someone. Jed, do you know that law? Because I'd have to look it up.
Okay.
Do you know it protects if you're doing CPR to save somebody's life?
Right, the Good Samaritan law, I know, protects people coming to rescue somebody, you know, performing CPR, the Heimlich, or something like that. I'm with you, I'd have to look it up to see if it come to the aid and help an officer, or something like that. My guess would probably be that, just off the top of my head, so don't hold me to this, but I would guess that it probably doesn't, but I'll have to look it up myself. But remember the, I think it was last year, keepcalsafe.org? That didn't make it on the ballot for November of eighteen, I think it was. It didn't make it on that ballot. It should be on the ballot of this next November. I think it is next November. So that is supposed to, hopefully it makes it on there. That should fix some of the laws of forty-seven and all of those, so. If it gets voted in. So hopefully we can fix some of those. And, yeah, I was kinda shocked at that one myself, so. Nothing shocks me anymore up there.
Basically, what it does is it, it no longer is a crime if an officer asks you to assist, and you're over the age of eighteen. Under the previous law, that if you refused, you could be guilty of a misdemeanor. This way here, if you ask and you refuse, you're not guilty of a crime.
Yeah, but if you've noticed, though, there's been a lot of videos out there lately where people just standing there, filming instead of helping, so it's kinda the new norm, anyway. But I would like to point out something that happened Friday. We had two citizens, there was a house fire. And a CHP officer and Officer Gillette, they were, we had a bicycle safety, where we were handing out helmets and stuff on Friday, noticed a fire. And when they got there, the house was about, I mean, it was, it was burning pretty good, and they heard a subject yelling inside for help, and they started to try to breach the door, ended up having to break a window, crawling their hands and knees as the fire and smoke were raging inside. And two Good Samaritans, Matt Reed and Josh Pierce, followed them in, and they found a subject in a wheelchair inside this burning house. He was seat-belted in the wheelchair, one of those electric-type wheelchairs, and they pulled the wheelchair over, cut the seatbelt out, and ended up dragging him out of the house and saved the guy's life. And unfortunately, the lady that lived there with him, we ended up arresting her for arson and attempted murder. But thanks to those four, that guy's still with us, and they risked their lives going in there, and, you know, without any equipment, and, you know, that the firemen have, so. We'll be recognizing those four, for sure, so, thanks.
There are more heroes among us.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who wanted to say anything? One thing I'd like to ask, if anybody's been upstairs, it's awfully, awfully hot up there. And I know that if we could try to see if there's anything we can do to expedite it. I was in RICA's office the other day, and I said, holy, wow, it's warm in here. And so she looked at it, and she said, it's only ninety-four. So if there's anything we can do to expedite that. And then when they closed the window down, people don't go back and look and see that it says, please, we're here. We're not, so can we, is there anything we can do?
Yeah, staff is researching a GSA component to that, to see if there's any sort of prebids or previously awarded bid contracts where we could possibly get the HVAC units at a cheaper price. We're getting close to an answer on that. If the answer is that it's not, then we're prepared to go out to bid, to be able to move forward. But we also stated to council the approval of the expenditure that we bring it back to Quality of Life for their review of the process of the bid process before we move forward.
Okay, I thought that's what we had already done, so.
Correct, no, we haven't gone there yet. We're still in the process of doing the research, and I do believe they, they believe they have found some contracts that contain that information, they're doing the research at this time.
Can we get her a portable unit?
Well, just for her.
The problem is you have to vent, you have to vent them somewhere.
Yeah.
Easiest thing to do is shut the door. We've been shutting the door, going back into our part of the house, because what happens is that just as the day goes on, it just gets hotter and hotter down the hallway, and then it starts coming into where the HR is at, and then towards my office, so.
Can we also put a sign up, like, when they walk up the stairs or go to the elevator, a sign, like, on a stand there, like, at the Kermit G?
Sure.
You know, because then they don't.
Put it at the window, but at the elevator would be.
But at the elevator, at the top of the stairs.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Great idea. Okay, anybody, any other council comments? Okay, we are going back into closed session, so we'll. What?
Can I expand one minute on this commemoration for nine eleven, just a moment?
Yes, go ahead. Make it pretty brief, Pat, because we did talk about it. Okay.
But I wanted to just mention about the candlelight vigil.
That'll be after your meeting, Jed, at dusk on nine eleven, which will be Wednesday. There'll be a candlelight vigil here. And remember that the flags will be on the field all week. Families enjoy coming and having, children love to run through the flags, and it's a great experience out there, and something to enjoy. And for, we will, as our. And for, as our VIPs, we're honoring Jed as our grand marshal this year. And just another example of why, when we hear the kind of leadership is provided by our police department, he will be the grand marshal. And we'll be also, Shannon Grove, Senator Shannon Grove, Vince Fong will be also in the VIP dignitaries, along with our mayor and Kern County Sheriff. And so I hope you'll all take advantage of this opportunity to participate in both the events. The candlelight vigil is very impressive. The candlelight fireman will be leading the bell ceremony and the fireman's prayer. And we'll also have, for both events, we have the bagpipe band, and they're very impressive, so I hope you'll be able to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will adjourn this meeting to closed session.